Okay, um, so, okay, I'm going to the regular meeting now. Okay. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of June 23rd, 2002. The meeting will take place on the, in a webinar format through Zoom. The Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight actually is Hal Zod until Jeff Pritchard arrives. And the co-hosts for the webinar are planning staff, right now it's me Diane Glomboski, Deb Jones might join us at a later time. And Kara Hofflin is also in attendance to record the meeting. Anybody speaking tonight should state their names prior to speaking. If there's any attendees or people from the public that want to speak, there's no public hearing tonight, so the only way you can speak is during public communications. And what we ask you to do is raise your hand through the Zoom format if you would like to speak during public communications and we'll call on you. And with that, the Chair will do the roll call for the meeting. Hal?
A brief one, so myself, we have Michael Kane.
Here.
And Barbara Toddwachs.
Yeah.
Apparently that's enough, so call a meeting to order. Just having public hearings. We don't have one. Do the consideration of public hearings, is that something we're doing first?
No, there's no public hearings, so there's no consideration of public hearings.
Alright, so. We want to postpone moving.
Hal, do you want to name a secretary?
Oh, okay, so I'll just appoint Michael Kane, the Secretary for the day.
Thanks, Hal, I think.
Since you asked. And I'd like to ask our panel to feel we want to just postpone going through the minutes until Jeff arrives. We can just put that out of order. Unless, Michael, you've got some comments already.
No, the only, the, I did have some comments, but just quickly, do you want to do that?
We can always return to it, so let's do that. Approval of minutes, I have a motion to approve minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of June 9th.
Barbara, you want a second?
Yeah, second. I do have one correction, probably same one Michael has, under approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is right on the first page. It has Kevin Fiftell voting and he can't vote, so.
Right.
Needs to be.
Kevin was named for me, I think Hank's name is in there, which doesn't belong in there any longer.
Right, right, Kane is correct.
Then I wasn't.
Fiftell, right, Kane was late, Fiftell was a voting member, yeah.
Yeah.
He was a voting member at that point, or he wasn't?
At that point, yes, he was.
I was never.
Well, okay, you've got Hank Steinford in there too.
Yeah, so that's gotta go away.
You need to, you know, dear sweet Hank, he just isn't there.
Yeah, unfortunately not, so, yeah. I'll, I'll have to fix the.
Okay, so Fiftell is okay?
Yeah, so Fiftell is, but Steinford, of course, isn't.
Okay, I saw the six X's and I thought, oh, what's wrong here?
Yep, Kevin was named, and I didn't, I never was able to, to join you, well, I did, but I wasn't dumb. My video was off, so no one knew I was there.
Right.
Didn't see me.
Also, I just got an email from Sue Sutherland and she said she got the second invitation for Zoom that I just sent and she's still unable to come in, so I'm assuming Jeff is having the same problem.
Can she call in, ask her to just call in maybe?
I'll, yeah, I'll email her.
You want to email Jeff the same, so the two of them can just be called in. They won't have the visuals.
Wow, maybe I did something wrong?
Well, I'm surprised they can't just.
No, I don't, I don't think you did, I think it's, it's with Zoom.
Even if I don't click on the, the link, they should be able to type in the number for the meeting and get this, just the same.
And I can actually, you know, they would be in attendees and I could promote them to panelists. So they can probably, if they can just get into their Zoom account and type the num, the ID number and then the password.
Alright, move on.
So those were the two comments, just those, those voting things?
Oh, well, I guess, I guess the Kevin is okay.
Yes.
But, but Hank is on all the votes.
Right.
Oh, okay, so take him off all the votes. Wow. Okay.
Is that it? Yeah, if we have public communications, you have any public communications?
I had emailed Deb Jones about a blight ordinance concerns that I had noticed. And she was going to see Tom Zanarini about it and report back, so that's really my only communication.
Do you know what project or site it was, or?
No, there were, ah, there's Jeff.
Oh, good.
There were three people that had blight concerns and I had sent, I sent the names to.
I didn't hear anything yet from her, so. We can check, if she's not on, if she's not on by the end of the meeting, we'll check and get back to you on that.
Okay.
Hi Diane.
Hi.
I finally got on, I don't know.
What's your favorite part, Jeff, the minutes?
We'll, we'll back up just a touch, you only went a little bit farther, so Jeff, do you have any corrections in the minutes?
Yes.
No, right.
Yeah, I couldn't believe, I don't know why I couldn't get on that.
Sue can't get on either, so it's not just you.
Because last night I went on to Zoom and had no problems, and I, I had to shift computers and I finally got on. Yes, on the minutes, on the boxes for the vote results. You gotta get rid of Steinford's name.
Yeah, we got that.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, that was the only thing I had.
Okay. So do you want to vote on the minutes, then?
Yes, how about we transfer Chair back to Jeff?
Why do we have a motion to approve them, I assume?
Yes.
Yes. Approved, so again, and that's what I discussed, so.
Any other comments? That was it? Okay, so we'll vote on, on the motion to approve the the minutes of June 9th, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. No public communications, does anyone in the commission have any communications? Identify the staff, have any?
No, we do not have any communications.
Does anyone in the, in the public wish to address the?
I don't see anybody in attendees tonight.
Alright, they couldn't get on either. I gotta figure out, I've had a lot of computer problems recently, usually it's the other computer, the computer I was using is my laptop works perfectly. The desktop is all messed up, I had to re-launch the thing and everything. Let's see, no special permits, subdivisions, nothing, site plans, nothing, all business, nothing, no business. No applications. Do we have any?
We got, we have a subdivision modification that we just got in for subdivision on Briar Hill Road, they're just revising a sidewalk on the, on the subdivision plan. So that will be coming in in the next, probably in the beginning of August.
Alright. Is that Sue Sutherland that just called in?
Yes, yes, I just finally got in, thank you.
Okay.
Wonder why? Must be the virus, okay, next. This is EBA referral for the public hearing on a sign for Gold Star Highway 393 Gold Star.
Yes, this is a, um, a commercial site on Gold Star Highway, the right of way is pretty far back from the street. So if they had to put the sign 10 feet back from their property line, it would be way back from the street. So they're asking for the variance to go to their zero property line, which is still pretty far back from the street. But it doesn't require them to actually go to the state and get an easement from the state like some people do along Route 184 when there's a big right of way. They'll actually go to the state and get the ability to put the sign in the right of way, but they're just asking for it to go to their property line.
And the property line is behind the sidewalk?
Um. I don't know if there's a.
Drawing, there's a, like that runs along the highway there.
It's a hard drawing to read.
You couldn't read it, it wasn't.
Yeah, I think it is behind the sidewalk.
And, and they, they have an existing sign now that you can see, I don't know what the problem is.
Oh, I.
I don't know, I don't know.
But, does anyone have any concern with this?
I, I feel strongly about letting them do it, I've, I can't tell you how many times I've driven by that property because I don't see the sign because it's so far back. And I have to turn around and go back again.
Yeah, what is the business? I think it's a new business, I think there's an accounting office in there. I think that's a business.
We've let other people do the similar thing, right?
Right, right. Right.
Because highway right of ways.
Where are the adjacent sites, adjacent businesses, I was trying to figure out, you know, precisely where this is. And it seems like most, all the signs are fairly large and well set back. So it's not like it's competing if it's in line with the other signs, is this one, are they also at zero property line or in the right of way? Because all the other, the cars, the other things, they all seem very far back, which is always okay if everybody's far back, it's, that's a problem when the other businesses are close up.
Yeah, it's, um, I don't know, I can't, you know, it wasn't my project, so I don't visual, I can't visually see all the other signs along that road. But some of them have asked for, you know, the variances to be in the right of way and some, if they're, if they have a big expanse without a lot of tree cover, then it's okay. Probably to be pretty far back, it's when you have the trees and then all of a sudden your site opens up, um, that's where I think you have problems.
I drove by a place in both directions, and there is an existing sign there today. That's pretty big, it is back from the highway quite a distance, and I don't know if you could really read it because it's so back so far, but there is some shrubway, shrubbery in the adjoining part, lot on the other side of the driveway that would block, partially block this existing sign. But, I, I guess, that since we've let other people do it, it'd be hard to justify not letting them do the same thing.
I just want to make sure we understand what we've let other people do in that area.
Yeah, but there's no other signs that I saw that were close by at all. It's sort of off by itself.
Yeah. What, what, what business is there now, I mean, I looked at the 393 came up on Google Maps and it came up to be somewhere near the building that's Gold Star Collision, is that the same building or am I looking at the wrong place?
No, it's next to it.
Oh, next to it.
And it's, it's between that and, and the dealership, auto dealership.
Oh, it's just a house there, or was it a house?
I think so.
It was a house, yeah.
In fact, can I share a screen? There we go. Is that a there?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. And so the property actually, I mean, the, the building comes up almost as far as some of the adjacent signs are.
Right.
And it sits up high.
And it sits up high, that's true.
And you know, some property lines there go right out almost to the road and some go pretty far back, so it, they jut in and out along 184. Um, I think that was when they were, I think that was when the state was trying to get some of the right of way there and they got some properties and not others. So some people don't have problems with where they're putting the signs, but some still have their property lines really far back.
Because this is the Nissan sign here, and it's up on top of the hill and way far away. I think they've got something similar at this end, but I'm not sure where.
I think they got a variance though, to the Nissan sign.
But there's nothing, it's still so far away from the road. And so in the other direction there's blank space and nothing there, and I just hate to see us riddle away it just because people would like to have it near the road. Maybe what they need is a better sign.
Well, I don't think it's gonna be pretty close to the road, I think the setback's pretty far.
But it sits closer to the road than the adjoining properties, the property line is closer. But if you look at this map, you're looking, or this picture, you're looking at how, see that, those trees that are in the right-hand corner of the lot, that's what really blocks the view.
That's true, I get that.
That's where, otherwise, the existing sign, I think you can see it, it's close to the site, I assume that's what it is.
It looks like that's, at least, the one tree is fairly enormous, I believe, and it looks like a deciduous tree, I wonder if just undercutting the tree so that the canopy's up and so the sign's better, would kind of do the job. I just hate to see one little sign much closer, and we don't really have to decide on this right now, do we, we just have to.
Yeah, because it's meetings tomorrow night.
Meetings tomorrow night, but that's just the hearing, right?
No, usually they decide the same night.
Okay. So I suppose I can't say I'm in favor of it right now, I'd say, just say, just in terms of a blanket statement, without knowing exactly how close it is because up and down that street for half a mile either way, nothing is very close to the sidewalk. So this little business would have its little sign sticking way out there.
I don't think it's gonna be sticking way out, I think it's still gonna be probably right in here.
Wait a minute, I have to, oh, come on, I can't, we can't see your pointer on, on my screen.
It's gonna be almost close to the house because, um, can you bring up a street view?
Probably.
Are you on GIS?
No, just look at this, you're just looking at my, it's Google Maps, but we'll see.
Because if you go on GIS, you can see.
The property line.
Well, well, you can see the property line, you can't see the highway person.
Yeah. Oh, is that their sign there, this little bitty thing here?
I don't, I don't know who's, I've got a lot of things on my screen right now that you put up.
Oh, heaven.
Okay, yeah, we need to get rid of some of that stuff.
Okay, let me get rid of this. Back again.
Yeah, let me bring up his application.
Okay.
Hey, here's the, here's the property line right here, and here's the sign right close, the proposed sign right close to the building.
Need to share that with us, we're not seeing.
Okay, alright, sorry. Let me get rid of this. There we go. Can you see it now?
No.
No, no.
No?
You have, you have to pick the one you want to share and then open the thing saying, go ahead, share it.
Deb Jones is joining us. It's showing on my screen, I'm not sure why it's not showing on your screen. Share screen.
There we go.
No?
We see your background.
You can see it.
Quite a sign.
We're looking at Half Dome.
There it now?
Oh, okay.
Yep, got it.
Well, that's good, that's, that's exactly where they have something right now.
Yeah, so that's where they want to put it.
Okay.
There is an existing sign there now.
So here's the property line here. Um, yeah, and there's an existing sign right there, so they're not moving further out towards the, towards the roadway.
They already have a little structure there already, so, okay, that is, that's right next to the.
Yeah.
Building.
If, if they're denied this, would, would they still be able to go to the state and then ask to put it in the state right away?
Uh, they actually could under our new zoning regs, because under our new zoning regs, we allow, we allow them without a variance in the state right of way, as long as they get a easement from the state, because we knew this was happening all the time out there.
Yeah.
So they could actually go to the state and not get a variance.
And then even, then it would even be more offensive.
Yeah.
You need to stop sharing, we're still looking at your, at Half Dome. Should be up on the top there, there's a little red button.
But I can't, I can't get it.
Show my computer up at the top.
Yeah, I know, it keeps moving on me, every time I go down to say stop, share, it moves. There, okay. There.
Got it, bingo.
Computers aren't working well tonight.
Nobody could get in.
So what's the consensus, so, does anyone have any problems?
No.
So we have no comment?
Fine.
So we have no comment on that?
Yep.
Okay, the next item is application request, I guess, for, to support the, an application for open space. In Watchers, I guess we refer to it as a Watcher's property. You have a presentation for this, Diane?
Deb, do you want to do it?
Sure, if you want to share the maps.
Yeah, I'll try to share.
Also me.
I know, I know, I'm done now, thank.
Oh.
Yeah. Um, so this, you may remember this property as being the, the Four Winds at Mystic active adult.
That's the property?
It is, it is. So.
He's got share screening issues here.
There we go.
There we go. So, just to refresh your memory. Eccleston Brook, bifurcates the property, there's an incredibly vibrant vernal pool on the parcel. There are remnants of an Atlantic white cedar swamp, there's a couple of specimens there. There's sort of a deep water pond that you can see on No Ankle Ledge Road, has a number of trails. In addition to that, it's been surveyed by the Mashin Tuckett Pequots and there, there's all sorts of artifacts out here that are left over from the retreat from when the Pequot Fort was, was burned. It's a fairly important piece of property, it's to the north, there's existing open space with the Pendleton Farm subdivision, to the south there's existing open space with the Mystic Way subdivision, so it makes a nice link. And we have a willing seller.
That is the, this Mr. Bovee?
No, 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 he was the developer who had optioned the property and took the Four Winds at Mystic through the development process. The owner is, is Stephen Watrous, he's local, I.
Oh, okay.
Alright. Anyone on the commission have any concerns? With this?
I have only a slight concern, is that, I'm just trying to compare the map a little farther down, which shows the Eccleston Brook and the Wetland property in the middle there. I just want to make sure, I don't, I hate to go all or none, I understand about the, the historic significance because Pequot Woods was also surveyed, and as it turns out, there was the same surveying process and there's little flags, most of which have been removed. It's perfectly well documented without disturbing anything, but it's not like there's anything to see, everything was documented, is underground. So it's nice not to build how, too many houses on it, but neither is there anything pressured, but think, presses, precious, the thing that they, they're looking at was literally scraps from the war, a couple, some scatterings of arrowheads and bullets and powder containers and things like that, that's all they're doing is counting that stuff up and figuring out where they are, and that's how they figured out what was going. Somewhere way on the north of this property is where there actually was a village, but, Indian village, but not on this property. So I hate to see the whole thing go, I guess the part I'm missing, you say there's trails through there? But is that on our trail plan and does it really connect to anything?
It does, it shows in the P O C D, it shows as part of a potential greenway. And it does connect, as I said, the Mystic Way open space up to the Pendleton Farm open space. To the south, it's a pretty easy trek along a short section of road to get over to the Merritt Family Farm down through the Mortimer Wright property, out to Haley Farm and, and out to Bluff Point.
Yeah, see the connection.
I think also Pequot Woods too.
Right across the street, exactly.
That's, that's kind of my question, but it doesn't connect to Pequot Woods by any way I can think of.
You would have to walk across the street, but a couple of those cul-de-sacs have direct access into Pequot Woods.
Okay.
Mystic Meadows, I think, that one right there.
Yeah, Mystic Meadows. Is that it?
Yep, that's it, and that's a little piece of open space that connects into Pequot Woods.
May I speak?
Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, so my, my, I mean, the, I know that when this was, this application was made, I remember working through it, and this was a very difficult property to, to work with because of all the vernal pools, it was actually gonna have to, I, I believe part of the development was the road that went through it was gonna have to be turned off for several months, is that not correct, for salamanders to cross?
Yes, during migration, it was, the Wetland Agency required it to be closed, that's correct.
They were gonna close the road in this place to let the salamanders go across, so I mean, we're dealing with a fairly significant ecological site, I would say here, and if nothing else, a large part of this property probably should never be developed.
I completely agree with, mostly it shouldn't, I just want to make sure that the mostly doesn't necessarily become all, just.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what part of the, I think that when they were gonna do, I wish we had the maps of the development.
We do.
There was.
In your package.
It's the next, it's the next line, in fact, just go down one.
No, I don't have, it's, I just have this slide.
There is, it's the last page on the.
In your packet.
I think it's mostly.
I don't have it, I can't, I don't have it.
Yeah, okay, I can see it here. It's just because I printed it out on a half a sheet of paper, Jeff. The, the it looks as if the northern part of it, but the thing is, is that it would seem like that's, I mean, that, it's all running along Eccleston Brook.
Well, I, I think if, if you look at, that there was a part, or that goes along a brook that was supposed to be all conservative. And if you look at the P O C D, it identifies that, doesn't identify this as part of a greenway at all.
Um, it does along the, the western side, it, it cuts through the property on the western side.
In the land use map, it does, future land use map.
In fact, I think that's what we're, that's all okay, I'm looking at the northeast. I don't know, quarter of this property. Looking at what the development was originally proposed, looks like there's a bunch of land that is far away from the brook, is far away from the other wetlands. It's kind of skirted it. Had a little difficulty in getting access to it, but nothing terrible. And then.
I just don't know if Mr. Watrous is selling just what we want. Or if we have to take the whole thing. Seems like he's selling 161 acres.
Yeah, well, I'm fine with buying it, buying the whole thing. But do we have to if we buy it, do we have to maintain it as open space? Because that's what we bought it for.
Yes, i- if we if we get this grant, that is a requirement that there's a conservation easement placed on it, and it is in perpetuity, open space and open to the public.
But but can it be split so that not all of it is in the open space grant application?
The grant is due July 1st. So I I don't think there's enough time to get a portion of it appraised because you do have to submit an appraisal with it. And Mr. Watrous wants to sell the entire parcel.
Well, I would think, yeah, I would think the town would have to buy the whole parcel. Because it's not not identified in the P O C D as open space. If you look at page 217, it doesn't say there's an easement on on the Eccleston Brook part.
I think it says there that there's desirable open space through the middle, actually.
If you go to page 217, it just identifies it as a gray area. And with an E in it, where the E is defined as conservation easements. And there is.
That's that's that that map just compares what has changed from 2002 to 2016.
But there is not. Desirable.
If you go to the future land use map at the end of the P O C D, you can see.
Now, I think one of the things that map you have up doesn't show is that, in fact, there's state wetlands on the eastern side that runs from the very top of the property to the bottom. And I think that was always an issue for the development. I thought at one point they were requiring a bridge across that. And then when you go out thinking you have more land, there's other state wetlands that are also going east west. There's
Right in here.
Two of them. And a smaller one.
Oh, yeah. This also is the area. I think this is the area, if I remember right, by reading the report where they found all the artifacts or that all the artifacts are in this area up here.
There's a cluster there. There's also a cluster on the west side of Eccleston Brook.
Right.
Jeff, look at page 2 dash 23.
Yeah. Yes.
And yeah, page 2 dash 23, you can see the green belts and you can see the desirable open space that cuts through the property.
I was looking at it this afternoon and it doesn't. But it just looked like not the whole thing is like Hal is saying, a lot of some of the area doesn't have to be treated as open space. I would think the town, if they're gonna buy it, has to do the whole thing.
That that's correct.
And I think anybody that would probably propose development right now, a lot of things have changed. Well, we we've redone the zoning regs, so they're gonna have different standards. Plus, I think the wetland boundaries or the regulated area has changed since 2004. Isn't it greater on this brook?
It is greater. Yeah, the regulated area has gotten larger.
Yeah, I would think it was quite a wide area.
So there are significant wetlands on here, and with the vernal pools, the regulated areas, you know, are much larger probably at this point than they were when it got approved in 2004.
I mean, as as the 2004 map shows, it's almost 50% wet with Eccleston Brook, its tributaries, and then the the wetlands associated with those.
Well, I was just saying, right along No Ankle Ledger Road, you could develop a few lot, a few houses in there, but that's probably about it.
But there's wetlands there that are not shown on that map. It's as if they've developed every single lot they could get out of this.
You may be right. It doesn't. It looks like there's a big up off from the road down there. It wouldn't be very.
I wish you could see my screen, but yeah, it's all purple running the whole way up from the pond. That is a C cog map I'm looking at. And same on the other side, the whole thing's really, you know, it's developed. And then on the bottom, of course. It's challenging. It always was.
But this this letter from John said that the letters of support are due by August 1st, not July 1st. Is that?
That's right. That's right. Due to, excuse me, the COVID pandemic, they extended the date of the grant, the deadline for the grant from June 1 to July 1. And then they allowed another month for letters of support and council resolutions.
Oh, okay. But the application has to be in July.
That's right.
I guess I want to back up on one thing I said. I'm looking at the overall map. I actually have a copy of that report, but it'd take me a while to find it, so I won't wait on this meeting for it. But I actually do believe that northeast corner that I think is somewhat buildable might actually be where there was a Pequot Village. That was part of the escape route through there. So as much as I'm not very impressed with a lot of the things that are out there, is they're very interesting. I wish we had some markers with the next to our signs. We have no signage there that lets anybody know that this is literally, by the way, the only completely preserved thing of its of its kind, because we never built anything on most of this route. So we do have it here. It's just nice not to build houses on it. But in that case, that particular place actually did have a village there, I believe. It's either there or on the other side of Flanders Road, but I believe it might be on the high ground in that corner. So maybe it's just worth keeping just for that.
I mean, the thing is, too, is that there's so many liabilities on this property. It would. And and I believe that that's part of the problem that that Mr. Bovee had in in doing his work. There's not a whole lot left, and the last thing you want to do is stick a shovel in the ground and come up with, you know, something historic, and then everything stops. So it's, you know, you're buying a pick and poke for a developer, but for the town, you're, you know, getting something of value, it would seem like to me.
At least the parts you want to conserve, it's that's probably not worth splitting it up into little sections.
I think one thing that I thought was pretty interesting, too, is they had these properties between Pequot Woods and this property with historical things, let alone recreational. You're really less than a mile, I think, away from the new middle school and Fitch High School. So I mean, Glatton's fortunate. There's so many treasures that kids in the classrooms, if they want to take advantage of it and some signage and, you know, information, all I think it could. It's it's one thing to read a book. It's another thing to be standing there or walking around.
Will the grant cover the complete cost of the property?
No, the grant will cover up to 75% of the cost.
And?
And the town will be responsible for the remaining 25.
But from a planning's viewpoint.
I know. I know.
Proficing small small sections that would be developable. It's either that or none. So maybe it's better to to sacrifice them. I guess you could use them for you can use it for active space.
No, it's for passive recreation. Yeah, I mean, you can negotiate and reserve some rights when you when you're awarded the grant before you sign the conservation easement. For example, out at Sparkle Lake, we reserve the right to do a small parking lot, to do an outdoor classroom, to construct trails. But but they will not let you do ball fields or something like that.
Oh, I wasn't thinking of. Okay, you could use it for a parking lot with park all the cars from Mystic and run a shuttle.
Can we include if I'm assuming we're gonna support this action, it sounds like.
That sounds like we have.
Can we include in it something about the the trail system? I'm very familiar with what we've already got at Pequot Woods. And the only action the town actually can kind of afford to do is to cut logs out of the way and spray paint where the path is supposed to be. And during the wet months, it's not there. The brook just runs right through the paths and it looks to unofficial volunteers to actually reroute paths where it needs to be and fill things in. So there's no real trail maintenance per se, except for noting where the trail's supposed to be. And this is a good thing, but now we don't have any way of connecting the trails, except for it's our little secret here, and maybe it'll show up on a trail map. It's become more evident now with everyone going nuts, trapped in their homes, the traffic, the foot traffic in Pequot Woods has quintupled. Someone walking by my house every day. It's it's wonderful. But because there's half of it is still tromping through the mud. And so what's going to be around these wetland paths through here will just be that much more tromping through the mud unless we have some towards some actual procedure for improving these trails so they get used. It's nice to have them on a map. But if you can't get to them, if you can't park near them, you can't get to them because they're overgrown, or they're just mud pits, then then they kind of fade away into nothingness. And I hate for that to happen. And it's nice to have the spirit of open space, but we like the open space because we like to walk through the open space, not because we just want to have it.
So I like it because just to have it.
Oh, it hasn't filled with stuff, but being a swamp, you're not quite. It's never going to be filled with stuff. So that's it kind of takes care of itself that way. But I like to be able to appreciate it and for the most part, I don't appreciate it just by driving by and having a few agile people be able to with good height, strong boots, be able to make it through there. It should be something that we can all appreciate. So can we kind of add some little reminder in there that, oh, by the way, if we're going to acquire walking trails, that we should be maintaining our walking trails and marking your walking trails beyond just cutting the trees out of the way?
Well, I think it's a lot of it to do in the design at the outset of your trail. And in Pequot Woods, I agree, there's one trail there that could be very beautiful, but it's almost impassable for most people a good part of the year. But I'm sure I'd be surprised if the Park and Rec people wouldn't want to have a nice trail system here that connects and that is as low maintenance as possible. And sometimes you need bog bridges or whatever. So but you want people to be able to use it and enjoy it. That's the whole idea of these grants.
It would seem like that would also be how why you would want that northeast corner. Because it's gonna be the the dry area. I mean, other other properties that the town maintains, they do a very good job. I think like Hidden Lake, you know, is very well maintained. But it's the water issues, and that's why this property in the northeast corner would probably work if if there were trails in that area. And then if people wanted to go into the wetter areas, you know, they're not precluded.
And this that particular place might actually have the great advantage if if I'm correct about the general location of having a trail and having a post with a plaque saying this was this was the site of this village. That didn't fare so well in the Pequot Wars. All right.
It looks like we've got really two two concerns here. One is to get the state to approve a grant, which we have a motion that was given to us to do that. And the other would be, how do we communicate with either Parks and Rec or the town council for some action for act to allow public access, which would be a separate issue.
Yeah, I think and that would probably be, you know, there would be no point in even doing that until later on.
Yeah, well, I don't. Yeah.
Well, you have to have public access, or you can't get the grant.
Exactly.
That's the requirement.
That's right.
Yeah, they don't give money so that people can, you know, hide these little parcels and to, you know, do nothing with them. You have to have.
That's right.
So they have to identify.
They do.
Yep, you have to send your trail thing. I mean, that's a good thing to do, your ideas. But yeah, that's all part of it.
So you're what you want to do is maybe make a motion that, you know, if you're supporting the grant that, you know, we'll be able to write a letter that's from you that supports the grant, but then you can also make some kind of comment at the end that's to the town council regarding, you know, if if this money gets awarded and the town supports it, then you know, they should they should be looking at you know, somehow being able to maintain the trails that are that are created on the site or something like that.
But for tonight, I I think the the motion that you staff provided is probably adequate to support the purchase of this land, which I assume we have a majority for that. The other part, we could just do do in a letter or something to the council and Parks and Rec.
Right.
Which we could either do or just ask.
I think they would need that when they go into negotiations with the state, assuming there's a grant so that the state will allow us to do certain things in that, you know, we can say we want this this area to be publicly accessible for trails and so forth.
So we're in the process of of finishing up the grant application, and that is definitely a part of it, is that trails will be developed. A small parking area will be developed. And so if if we get the grant, we're committed to doing that. If you apply, if if we get this grant and we develop it and we decide to apply for another grant, you have to document that you are in compliance with past grants. So so, yeah, that that absolutely is part of the program is to develop trails on this piece.
Okay. All right. So I I'm gonna make a make a motion then to say the Planning and Zoning Commission finds that the acquisition of the Watchers property, Zero Noi Ledger Road, is consistent with the recommendations of the Plan of Conservation Development, including protect other important natural resources, section 2 dash 4, continue to develop and maintain green belts, section 2 dash 11, continue to build a trail system, section 2 dash 12, and protect historic and cultural resources, section 2 dash 22. I guess those are sections or pages. The commission supports the town's application for fun funding from the Connecticut E E P, Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Program to Purchase Property.
I'll second that.
Moving seconded. Anyone have any discussion regarding the the motion? During none, then we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Except for Hank.
Yeah.
I can't believe that got through.
Yeah.
Do you think it's necessary for the the commission to make any formal direction to either the council or the Parks and Rec on this, Deb, or
Let's wait.
Concerns are and can handle the.
Yeah, and and we can just, if you want, you can wait until we actually get the grant. I mean.
All right. All right.
We might not, so.
Yeah, there's no sense in doing a lot of work now for something. The state has no money. Since UConn's gonna demand a lot to support him. Okay, uh, no other new business, commission reports, reported chair. The only thing I have is that uh is saying to us the drawings for uh Three Water Street yesterday, so they can proceed with the work there. I hope they aren't doing any work that requires inspections or anything, like pile driving or are they, Deb, or?
They do not have any building permits at this point.
What that means, all they can do is raid land.
And and I think they've been removing contaminated material and.
All that stuff, but I mean, it, it's nothing requires an inspector.
Right.
Building, does it?
Right.
I don't wanna have them say it's too late, we already did it. Reporter commission, does anyone on commission have anything to report?
Uh, I had, I'd mentioned earlier before you arrived, Jeff, that I had contacted Deb Jones about some flight concerns. And I just didn't know if she had any, any responses, yeah.
So I did talk to Tom Zanarini. Um he is aware, he's contacted those, I mean, those folks have contacted him. He is aware of the fight and he's progressing with enforcement.
Go ahead.
I don't know if it's uh, if it's been reported or not, but I heard a rumor that, well, we knew that Bartleby's was closing and and I heard a rumor that SIFT was looking at the property and I actually asked the question and they got back to me within a few hours, in the wee hours of the morning, saying that, yes, they're gonna be opening up a donut and coffee shop in that location.
Yeah, because I saw people working on it the other couple of days ago.
It's supposed to open within a few weeks.
Oh, really? So it'll be SIFT one and SIFT two?
I don't, they'll probably call it something else entirely, but some other one syllable name, I suppose.
Wow, it's gonna take over the town, yeah.
Where is Bartleby's?
That's not a bad thing.
Where is Bartleby's?
It used to be the uh newspaper store on the Pearl Street and uh Main Street.
Yeah.
Any, anybody else have anything? Reporter staff? You have anything, Deb?
I don't have anything. Do you, Diane?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, I say, no one else says anything, I'll make a motion for adjournment. So, meeting is adjourned.
See you in two weeks.
Mm-hmm, two weeks, fourteenth is well, actually, it's the fourteenth. Next meeting is uh July fourteenth.
And there'll be a public hearing that night.
Is there, on Zoom?
On Zoom.
Gotta figure out why I couldn't get on.
Um Mystic Shipyard?
Oh. That, there wa- wasn't there a lot of flap when that was first built, building? Where there
I wasn't here when the yacht club was first built. Um I, we did the pool in the early um two thousands.
But I thought the yacht club, there was a lot of discussion. I think it was before I was on the planning commission, but
Probably.
There was a lot of discussion over what they could or couldn't do there. And I don't know if it was just pure zoning, but I might want to dig up what was going on, what the final resolution was. And maybe it was just zoning regulations were different than the way that area was on. I, I don't remember, but I I thought that they sort of were forced into having it as a yacht club or only occasional use, not for continuous commercial use. They're talking about now. All right.
Yeah, before my time.
Was it?
My time as well.
I don't think, how long ago was that? When they built the yacht.
Late eighties, I think.
Yeah.
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 Goes back that far. At one time, it actually was a yacht club. They ran it, the Mystic River, something rented it. I don't even know if that organization exists anymore.
I don't know.
All right, all right.
All right. Good night.